September the 16th, 2025, 5:30 PM. As always, I'd like to welcome those of you who have come in person to attend our work session, as well as those who may be watching us by social media or by Facebook. We welcome you here to our meeting. Work sessions are informal. It allows the board members to ask questions, hopefully get their questions answered, whereby when it comes to a vote, then we can make intelligent decisions. With that being said, we have an agenda and we're going to proceed with our agenda. First, we have Ms. Susan Paye. Is she here?
Can we still discuss this?
Go ahead if you want to, just some of that here, or also Gary's on here. They started. Is there a way to maintain the overlay open or do that cross thing? Just do it one side at a time?
No, really not.
So that pipes in the ground that goes across to you?
No. They have to lower the water without pipes the bridge down.
It'll be good. Do you know the plan?
Yeah. I think, understanding that, they would come to.
The plan of progress is stuff. I will. We heard it on Delaware.
Well, they wasn't starting at 5:00 and 6:00, they were starting at 7:00 o'clock in the morning. Retired people still want to get their rest.
Okay.
How many people are waiting?
Well.
I'm 100% happy how much time that was issued. You're retired, you go over.
Okay, number two, concerned by citizen Melvin Tants, Tantsley. Is he here? Okay. Mr. Gary, you got here right on time. You got several projects that you want to talk to us about, Mr. Gary?
Yes, sir. Alright, so the first one here is the call system for South Railroad Boulevard. Couldn't talk about.
Let me.
Go ahead.
When he said that Delaware Avenue project may come under bid, one of the things that I looked at was down there by Railroad Boulevard, right on the Pearl River Bridge. If you've ever been through there, it's horrible. And I just simply asked Gary if people just go through there, look at it, and give us an estimate, just in case the board would want to look at that area and decide to spend some of the leftover down there. So that's what Gary is up here talking about.
And so we.
Yeah. Procedural, like the way I've asked that we do this is the asphalt pricing on the citywide milling overlay is less than asphalt pricing on Delaware, because that's a Greenbrier sewer project and the citywide overlay is bigger than both. So I would ask, if Delaware comes in over, we close that bid package out. Anyone left over, slide over. Oh, when that project comes in under, any leftover money gets stacked on top of the citywide milling overlay, because our cost units are better there, and that project gets bigger equally to what Delaware is getting smaller. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, I agree completely on that. The call system I have is based on unit prices for the overlay project. It is a cheaper tonnage. It's, the asphalt's at $125 a ton compared to $40 or something. So pretty significant. The call system we got for that block is $9,715. And this is doing from basically underneath the bridge, the top of the hill there, basically.
$9,700, $9,000?
That's right.
$9,000. No, $9,715.
Some of your projects is really. It's North Railroad Boulevard.
Right there on the Pearl River Bridge.
Figure the mill, you spent $3,000.
Paint repairs and. You see, they had to have, it's a.
I can choose that as a product.
That's too failing?
No milling on there, because milling, we don't need to mill. So we looked at that, you've got the parking lot that's coming into there, no tying flush for that. There's no curb on the left side either. There'll be no problems. You've got plenty of clearance underneath the bridge where there's no issues.
We're talking about the same ones? It's as bumpy as, to me, you had to mill to flatten it out.
No, we could do leveling. That's what we've got set up today. We could do some, so really, you kind of got two different ways to do it. You can either level or you can either, in this scenario, mill.
So this scenario, leveling?
Level, I'm sorry, level.
The county just had a lot. They don't, never, they only pre-level. They don't have the curves.
That's right. So they, they pre-level.
But I was just bringing this to the board's attention that if money comes in, like projected, that if it comes in under, that we'll look at this possibility spending some of that money to cover that little area like this.
Yes, sir.
That's just it.
What did I mean?
Just a suggestion.
I will say that the asphalt on the Delaware project did have around $70,000.
$70,000.
It's a possibility to be able to get even further on the road. We've got to get some total quantity as far as the temporary striping, permanent striping. But as far, that would just mean that it would come even more. But as far as the asphalt itself, seventy-five.
Will, Blake Palmer asks.
Okay, what about the add-on? Would it come in, the whole add-on rules that we had us to come in together?
Those add-ons are already, when y'all select to do those add-ons, that got added into the contract base deal.
Okay, so you go beat Mr. Gary to talk to us about the add-on?
No, no, those add-ons, y'all picked from that list from the beginning. Those are already part of the contract. Most of them are already.
Okay. So let me tell you. Is there any chance that the Delaware bid, the other projects can come in under $4 million? The reason I ask that is can we lose our match at $1 million more? Where do we lose our match?
We don't lose your match. Y'all guys, y'all have the three Arco projects. Y'all set aside $2 million to be matched between those three projects.
Lex, can you help me?
Alright, so we've got a pay application for Delaware Avenue improvements, page five. Add in Greenbrier, Delaware, page number five. Running Mountview, $232,000. $45,016, if I read this correctly.
And the second one is page number two for the Downer Heights project. Now they're seeing Downer Heights projects. They are getting close to wrapping that project up. Basically, all the improvements have been done. They're doing some cleanup today. They were doing the asphalt work. Well, we had to dig up the other places to put, the box filled in to the end of the scene. Also doing that work today, especially.
Okay, so like with Tom.
Oh, that. Downer Heights project. The frame is putting right in front of the drive. At the box called.
Yeah.
The frame is curved, that's right. Like, I have to see the asphalt layout, like it's a little high in the water.
So you're talking about in, what is it, come on, daughter, driveway? Right inside. So you're talking about in that corner there?
Not, not corner, not corner. In front of her driveway. I mean, before you get to the ditch, right in front of the lane, this driveway, you think it's poor. You know.
Yeah.
But it's, it's. It's, it's big frame there, but it looks like it's tilted. High, left water going on curve, I think my asphalt is stupid, it curves.
I'd say let's, you know, I'll take it one bit back. They do a lot of asphalt work. Let's see it all tie in first. We're definitely not having, you know, the issue like that. That's all been shot, put in the contract. I don't expect that to be an issue. Looking at it, it'll be a rush.
It looks nice though. They did it right there.
It does.
They did it right there.
I was down there today.
And I liked the way you did the taping wall, the height of it. I think that was true.
Yeah. It's not, it's not, it's all the issue.
Okay, that takes care of you. Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Yes, sir.
I do see Ms. Susan has made it, so let's go back it up to Ms. Susan. You just walked in. Are you ready, Ms. Susan?
Absolutely. I was ready last week. Good afternoon, good afternoon. My name is Susan Paye. I live in Downer Heights. I'm temporarily resident here. I was going to rates here. But the thing that I'm here to speak to you regarding is we experienced construction in Downer Heights last week, this week. And it was amazing to me that on Tuesday morning, the day after Labor Day, there was construction there at 7:00 AM. We could hear, I could hear, as they were right at my door, all of the heavy equipment, all of the sprinkling they did, they're walking, they're talking. We had it all at 7:00 AM. I also went out to ask what was going on and why were they here so early? They told me that they started at 7:00. And I asked him, actually, I called the police, because I asked him, how is it that you could be here at 7:00 AM with all of this equipment? There's only one way in the subdivision and one way out. So all of the residents that were trying to get to work were delayed because the equipment was blocking the street. So what I needed to know was, when I called the police, he told me he couldn't help me because I had to talk to you all. And my answer to that was, well, they're not open yet. So why do we have all this work going on at 7:00 AM in the morning? So I think it would be in the best interest for the residents of Downer Heights and the projects going forward, if anything else should occur, or any other neighborhood. I think it would be in the best interest of the residents as well as the the construction companies that come in, that there'd be a time limit established. If they could come and start their jobs after 8:00, residents are going to work, are probably going to work, and they wouldn't experience the delays of getting in and out if they happen to live in a subdivision similar to Downer Heights. So I'm asking you as selectmen to please consider establishing an ordinance that puts that in place, prohibits any construction work prior to 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday. And if that could happen, I would truly, truly appreciate it. I also asked the question of the engineer, and I was told that it was a million-dollar project that was being done in Downer Heights. And I understood that it was supposed to alleviate flooding. And the residents in the community have always complained about flooding for years. But my question is, how do you alleviate a problem by giving it more, defeating it? The water that we get in Downer Heights doesn't come from the little creek next to my property. It comes from Holden, the street just western. That's where the water runs from. But the creek has been inundated, and all of that needs to be addressed in the way that it's being done. Because I was informed by your Public Works Director that my property line ran down the middle of the creek. So what I need to know is, as the village, or the city, rather, I'm so used to saying village, because I live in village. As the city of McComb, are you now taking responsibility for maintaining that creek? And if so, we'd like to know. That's my comment. There anyone here that could give me information regarding that?
You can attempt. You can give an answer. Yeah, I can't really give an answer. A few different things, you know. To your first point is, you know, you're a citizen here in the city of McComb. You, you see all the other problems that we have in McComb, the roads that we have not been able to get to. Holden Road being one, that we'd love to do, especially the southern.
Well, that's not part of this billion-dollar country project.
Uh, no. Just the Downer Heights issue, but to your 7:00 AM point is, as a taxpayer, if it were to cost us more, if we were to put some restrictions on the contractor, on the contractor, of times they worked, would you be in favor, if you only included funds, of us putting a restriction of when they can work in contracts going forward, knowing that we'll have to do less work in other areas to make up for that increase?
How so? If you're, because right now, as it stands, you have nothing in place. So they can come in at 6:00 AM if they choose.
So what we've always done, and I probably can't say we, is, is whatever. Slugging talking. Um, I respect, we're working with. Um, is, is whatever is the cheapest option available is typically what we do. Whatever is, however we can work with the contractors, get the best price, so we can do the most work possible, is typically how we set it up. I don't get it. No one has said, "I'm sorry for the inconvenience." Sorry for the inconvenience. To the flooding issue. There was hydrology reports, there were studies on, on the amount of flow through both of those creeks. And the solution was that the major cause of flooding in your area was water backing up and filling up to the street level. So the plan that was put in place was to create more space for that water to go to help save three to four inches. That was the major impact area along that back creek.
The covers there were just ground. Biggest, it's room, almost, huge.
Yeah.
Never seen a place on the street.
Yeah, they're, they're to take up water, so it doesn't, so it has somewhere to go other than the street. As of the creek. For me, it comes down to money. You know, if, if, if we mow every single ditch across the whole entire city, everything from your big ditch along Holden, alongside your property, to every two-foot ditch through every neighborhood, in front of every house, in the right-of-way, I don't know if we could hire enough people to do that. So we do rely on the goodwill of the community to maintain the right-of-way up to the street across pretty much all neighborhoods. Now, your creek is a little different. So now the mayor's gonna have to help you with this, the attorney. My understanding is, we have the right and the ability to do it, due to it being a part of the stormwater drainage system, a big creek, to go back there as needed. But it would be very expensive for us to have some type of schedule where we do it every two months or something. And so, you know, we're charged by the voters and yourself to be the best stewards of taxpayer dollars we can possibly be. And anytime anyone could support, mow their ditch, that helps us in that process, being that we don't have to take really expensive sidearm tractors out there and, and do it on their behalf. I don't know if I answered your questions. I don't know if I gave you the answer you wanted. I just wanted to give you maybe some background to the situation from my perspective. If that was helpful, you're welcome. If it wasn't, I'm sorry.
You said you were selecting Tommy? That area, from my understanding, and, and I've owned that property since early nineties, it was always maintained by the city. And once it was no longer being maintained, I don't even recall when that occurred. I don't remember when that happened, when they stopped taking care of it. All of a sudden, the weeds was growing over the fence. But I understand what you're saying. And if you have this, this is a project that you entered into to get that settled as far as what you say was flooding. Like I said, it wasn't flooding, the water wasn't coming out of the creek. It was coming down the street. And I've seen that on several occasions. But if you have this project, why would that not be part of the project?
So, so grubbing or mowing is a part of the initial project. Resetting it back to normal is a part of the initial project. They call it grubbing, just mowing, pretty much. Now, what the plan is in the future is, is something I do think you charging the board with reasonably. But I would say my stance is, if we all take care of the ditches adjacent to our property as a collective, as a city, it saves the city a massive amount of money, saves our public works. I prefer working on water lines and potholes. A lot of time and money, and it's something that as a collective, could be better. Now, Brad, people have properties next to eight-foot-deep ditches that are very difficult to mow.
Let's stay with Downer Heights. Why do the residents of Downer Heights think cities have their mind?
Okay, that's where I'll get that.
I can't do that.
I understand. And, you know, Downer Heights has always been a very special community. It has very power lines, and I think it was awesome. I am very thankful for that design of burying the power lines in the community. I think it makes it a preview of the community.
Absolutely.
This word is heard to be talking about burying power lines multiple times. But I don't know if I can tell you anymore. I just wanted, felt like, if I could give some color to the situation, some good color to the situation.
I appreciate it.
There is an ordinance that the city has that talks about when work construction starts already on the book, and it says at 7:00. When would happen, amend our ordinance to address her concerns. Okay. Second of all, in the late nineties, early 2000s, the Attorney General came up with an opinion that it was not a responsibility of the cities to maintain drainage. What we were to do is make sure nothing obstructs the flow of the water. Obstruct means something there that's blocking. Most people don't know that grass does not block water. It lays down, but grass does not block water when it's rolled. What blocks water is trash and debris that clogs up drains and coves and things like that. The only thing that the city is now responsible for is making sure that there's nothing obstructing the flow of water. And most cities will tell you that's what they do now. They try to go in, if there's something obstructing the floor, the flow of water, they're going in, remove it. But maintaining a ditch or drain, most cities don't do that.
That creek has not been in a condition where there was trash or other things of that nature. There are trees growing there, as well as the weeds. Weeds eventually turn to trees, but they're not a threat. So it's not the grass, it's the weeds that turn to trees.
And again, I'm just stating the law. It says anything that obstructs the flow, and we have to have permission from property owners to go back there and do it, because like you were told, part of that ditch belonged to you. Okay, so we can't, we can't go.
You gotta have a right-of-way somewhere.
We can't go on your property without permission. And normally, we have to have a right-of-way or easement to go on your property to do any type of work in a ditch. And, and yes, that do it, that do it happens because my property butts one of the city ditches, and it goes across the ditch. It says, and I looked at the drawings, yes, you'd be surprised.
I am surprised. It's amazing to me that it's just been there all these years. And, and, and I was told by your director that there is no right-of-way for the city in that ditch.
We don't, it's, it's not, you have to give us permission. And permission is either by a right-of-way or by an easement. One of those two, you have to give us permission by signing that document, allowing us to go back. If not, we can't go back there and do anything.
And I'm sure the residents of Downer Heights will be happy to give you the rights to that ditch.
We don't want, we can't own the ditch. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
This is the exit sheet, we don't just sign it, we have to follow you. You just go ahead and draw the paper. If I'm right, that would make it something to all access. If you're the lawyer, you can draw it. That's what we're doing. So then, but it's not.
That's just what happened, I didn't know.
Let's move right on. Estimate of cars from PD.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Makes a good time to be briefly playing David's play. I'm looking to set up for the chief. But standing here today, we've been brainstorming homes and getting also issues. We have charging vehicles, making sure we stay visual for the community. A few things that was addressed to us about downtown, school districts, Westfield. Again, they wanted to see us, wanted to see us more often. So at one point in time, we was able to do that the last couple of weeks. So part, we get out, we fell into a situation where we had a hiring procedure, and we were able to get. Now, this is just an estimate from the angle we're going. We look at the state contract prices, and they're done. So we're taking another angle of looking at this, if we can go towards some used vehicles with good mileage. We've got to contact with companies, and right now, this is probably the lowest estimate that we got. I'll be upending another bunch from a company in Chicago that some surrounding areas use for motor vehicles to pull off. I'm asking, I think this is my job, part of my job description for my guy to speak to and say, "We'll be bored, happy to" take care of them in the future. um, take care of them in the future. And I want everybody to know that, you know, what comes with the job, you know, that there is a um, need for vehicles, for law enforcement. The need that comes with law enforcement, it does come with some fender benders and it comes with, you know, some accidents, but they're a need. So, both of your questions that can come my way of Chief and assist me at the time on the board.
Let me say, I understand need for vehicles. But but we are at the end of our fiscal year. And I don't think it would be proof of this board to look at purchasing. If I'm reading this correctly, and I may be wrong. Uh, the number of vehicles that you are asking for, I just think it would not be wise at this time. I think that we need to finish out the fiscal year. Uh, but that's just the mayor. You know, I'm not the board. I just think that we need to finish out fiscal year, start new year all looking at things. That's just the mayor. Selectman Todd.
Were you asking for these October one or this week?
We're looking towards October, November. I just wanted to be transparent and look ahead and prepare myself for these questions now and October.
Okay, anyone else? Selectman Thompson, she's yelling.
Uh, so you say, like, you guys have accidents to insurance companies. They have, uh, we get any money back from insurance companies?
So I I've done that paperwork on in the last two days. So, um, I have a spreadsheet where I've looked up the vehicle that's been totaled out by insurance and also the vehicle that is prepared for auction. And I think there's some questions on, once we get those that currency back from the insurance company, where that money lies. Is it going back to the general, going towards the law enforcement fund? Uh, I would say right that from the auction side of it, um, I think the auction data set, everything the percentage from the auction company and the person that's collected all goes back to a fund. So we, at this point, we don't know. I believe myself, Chief, that might be.
It can go back to the general, but it also can be restricted to our police department.
And that that currency could help minimize this whole. I know that might take some time to just locate all those insurance companies that will be collected, locate them. Hold them out.
Chief, I'm gonna be point blank, you know. And you know, I'm just straightforward, you know. In the last two weeks, we've had two police vehicles totaled. You know, we need police officers who value the property of the city. I hear you have accidents. I hear that you have. But when we total out vehicles, and let me say, in two weeks, we totaled out two. I have some concerns about our police department and how they value our police cars. Not only that, but also this board voted to allow police officers, there may be few, but we allow police officers a luxury of taking home a vehicle. When it comes to whether or not we have enough vehicles to cover shifts, that take home policy may have to be suspended in order that we have adequate vehicles for our workforce. I I'm just, you know, they they may not want to talk about it. They may not want to throw it out. But I have to be honest.
Sir.
With 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 you and 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 bring out what I know and how I see.
To hit on those three or four bullet points from you, Mayor, um, as of yesterday, um, with the department and staff, that, um, policy of receipt for take home, um, number five, A through G. G has been suspended, but P is structured under chief discretion of performance and go-getters. So that has been suspended under that G column. You get that possibility too. Only thing that's available now is our lieutenants and sergeants still, because they're under the possibility. They've been there for more than a year. They're supervisors. So we're covered though. But everybody else has been suspended under G column. Bullet point number two, yes. I don't think it's the negligence of our officers. I think it's just the job, the career, the call. My ten and a half years I have been in court. Two felony arrests, I pulled two F-150s, I pulled a Tahoe. I'm just transparent, just like, uh, and I wasn't negative. It's the job. Uh, one incident occurred when we was going through a car service, a 1042 slash 44 that did physical altercation. License and license was admitted. It happened. Second incident, I can speak for this young man. He's a hardworking man. I'm glad he's okay, but things happen. I get it. I do. I'm just speaking for him. I'm sorry.
Look, and I respect you for that.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, respected this board has to make hard decisions. And every vehicle gonna cost us anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars to fully get it there, fully equipped, all that.
Okay, that's sir.
And more accidents we have, guess what happens to our insurance agreement? So we have to look at everything. We don't have to look at just the police side of it. So we got this other side that we have to look at also. But I'm I'm just bringing it to it.
Sir.
Selectman Todd.
Um, I don't know if I I understood you much completely. So, correct me if I'm wrong, restate where I'm incorrect. Uh, your your stance is that, uh, these are all used vehicles, but vehicles, the the depreciate job. So, you know, I believe you're an esteemed officer in the community. You said what, ten years?
Yes, sir.
And in ten years, providing life-saving support, you've totaled four. And one of the calls from last week, or whatever, last two weeks we're referring to was life-saving support. Uh, the officer was was
Responding to.
Responding to a life-saving report.
No, he was responding to the 4244 and one of his brothers, the dude was asking for help to clear.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
So it was a, a need help call when this happened. I need help. Are you gonna come fast? You gonna come slow?
Are you gonna get there safe?
Uh, so, you know, my pushback is, I think maybe this board, including myself, has underestimated the cost of doing business with the police department. You know, that, you know, this is another figure that is required of doing the job. Uh, and so I'll circle back to the first point. Do you feel like it is, do you feel like you would lose officers or you recruit less officers in the future if you did not have a take-home policy, how you would feel? So, you know, we can stand here and say public safety is our number one priority, but we do have to understand all the different figures that go into it. Uh, I think that, Chief, you've been charged with, you've been charged with going back and finding out how much the city has gotten revenue recently from these incidents. Uh, I know your last round was bought with opioid money, so probably not counting that one. But before that, you know, and offset some of these costs. Uh, and see if you can get any of these costs any cheaper or not. But, but I I'll tell you, if they don't have extra cars, you know, you're gonna have officers doubling up in cars pretty soon. Uh, and and I think the more the mayor at at this stands, but the last thing I want to do is get into a Jackson situation where they had years of a no chase policy for reasons like this, and it led to every person in town knowing, oh, I'm just gonna, you know, boogie for two blocks and I'm good to go, you know. Uh, it's the cost of doing business. I'll leave it at that. You may.
No, yes, it's my job to supervise. You mean, you won't have to decide. But what is concerning me, uh, as the chief, being the language, is the cost of doing business. I want to caution this board and the department not to accept the culture of it doing business because what I did not hear the sub was the cost of liability. Um, and it would cost the city a whole lot more than a car. If we become cavalier and just say fender benders, blocks, totals, are the costs of doing business. So I just want to caution from a liability stance how we message that because your officers are missing.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to advise this board, in my legal opinion. The cost of sales tax revenue that has been going down the last year, the cost of property value, well, we're actually okay with property value. Uh, but the cost of having a city that is known for crime, okay?
Okay, yeah. Chief.
To the rest of the attorney, I think we should do absolutely right. Uh, but I got an officer who will come, I feel like. So the cost of life, I think, is way more grand than any material car or anything. So, uh, if we could save a life, that's what we gonna do. If they have to have my truck that I use my personal car. But if we can save a life, we'll do that. So I think the cost of life and saving life is way more, and I understand budgetary strength.
Chief, I'm not suggesting that the board decides against what your policy. I was advising regarding the language that was being used because it creates culture within the department that it is okay to run through a line or whatever. And that that was my only caution.
We got some young officers. I don't think they negligent. They're young. We we doing a lot of training. Uh, I do agree with that, but I do, we more understand what they now and rest of the budgetary strength. But, uh, when it comes to law enforcement, we would be here, be at the end of the year. I mean, at the end of our budget year, we do understand, uh, we're trying so much. In the future, when we get the audit, all in line, there's availability for grants. We're working on states contracts and stuff, so we're doing our part. But I want you all to understand cars is just part of this, I do. And I put through this.
Oh, those carry a pretty good liability too, don't they? We should take those off you.
No, no, I did, it it it's I understand exactly what the attorney's saying. She's right because we're in, we're in litigation now. Somebody suing the city. So I do understand that. But I do think the cost of life is is grand, uh, more grand than before.
Okay, thank you. Uh, select woman, Idris.
Yes, okay, um.
Kiosks to pay water bill.
Yes, kiosks to pay water bill. I just want to talk to the board about the drop-off box. And people complaining about they drop their bill off if there's some type of sale, some kind of going to get to pay their bill. They really it's not an access to pay the bill on time because the drop-off box is there. Just ask the board, would you consider or think about having a a kiosk where they can pay their water bill outside or somewhere close to, you know, instead of dropping it out the customer pack? And the mailman, you know, they might leave a mail in the mailbox. I'm just being honest. Sometimes when you take a delivery, you might leave a mail in the mailbox. Again, some type of these things can be. I'm not talking about, uh, replacing a person with a kiosk machine. I'm talking about just thinking outside the box and like considering this. Uh, Thompson was at the workshop and they talked about kiosks. I'm just saying something to him. Say, push it off. This is what you thought about it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying something that we gotta need to think about, you know, looking into.
You may, um, to me, yeah.
Yes, I'm saying what I need to think about.
I agree. I think a kiosk is a great idea. Especially if we can put it like we have a double door. Just leave one door open. I mean, see how people feel about you. And just put the kiosk inside that opening and let them, uh, pay everywhere or at the front on the porch here. I think it's a great idea and it's, it would be a a great asset to the city.
Uh, yeah, I think actually, I spoke about this yesterday. Um, uh, I I personally am a big fan of the double door system. Uh, you lock the interior door and then the exterior door stays open twenty-four seven. Um, but our only issue with that is the third street side is the only side that has that. Uh, there would have to be another three or four thousand dollars of putting a double door on the third street side, on the third street, no, Broadway side is the only one that has it. It does not have ADA access. Um, the third street side has ADA all the way to the sidewalk, but does not have the double door due to the entrance to the basement. Um, I'm kind of leaning towards, uh, Selectman Felder's recommendation of maybe even an ATM-style one into the side of the wall, into back of Henry's office or in the back of that building where you can drive up and service it, uh, in your off the street part. I don't really like where the box is now. I think it's too close to the street. Only hold one car or next car rear end you. You know, there's a chance of the mayor needing to back out and being blocked by people on the ATM. Um, but, but, you know, I, this came up in the, uh, efficiency audit. I think as a board, we should get a few different options before us. I do think the ATM option and, you know, the back of Henry's office would probably be the best way poking out of his office. Uh, but I think the cheapest option would be the double door system. But the problem is Broadway doesn't have, uh, ADA access, um, would be the only whole issue there. Uh, it was recommended in the audit that in the efficiency review, the way to pay for it would be a reduction of force somewhere else. Now, of course, reduction, we should not, I'm not a fan of laying one off, or would I? Um, my effort would be is as someone leaves, you just don't replace that position because that machine's gonna handle a lot of bills and that, instead of where they were going. If you give someone an option to drive up and pay their bill instead of get out and come inside, that machine's gonna get all the issues. Now, we have some procedural issues that we have to tackle in the city. Number one is people like to pay their bill at five o'clock on the twenty-sixth or whenever cutoff is. And how are we gonna make sure those systems are clean? So that, you know, they paid their bill that day, but they don't get cut off and get that communicated out to the public, um, in the proper way. There's technology. I think it should be able to get done. We just have to make sure we look at it. And then we also have to get quotes. And I, and the issue is I don't know where to get quotes from for this. That word with AS400 and Emerson, Amstran, Amstand, Armwater Building Service. Sorry. Selectwoman.
Yes, okay, then he says something that I totally disagree on. I just right here, when he made a comment about if somebody quit or get laid off, that that would not consider you highlighting that person. I said we still need that person because sometimes we have a line, sometimes it might be three in this line, there might be five in the next line. And if they use a kiosk machine, they can also service somebody. So sometimes showing a stat, so that's not my recommendation. I'm just saying that everybody can consider, like other businesses, like AT&T, when you go out there, they have a line. You go right there, they have two kiosk machines. Other businesses, if you're saying they just have other ways of, you know, taking payments. I'm not saying never let anybody else off to replace a machine with a person. I'm not saying never let anybody else, uh, to replace a machine with a person, no, not. Because everybody need their job.
Who can you direct to look into this on, on the act of the board and get us some quotes? Is that something, I don't know, email our buyer, get a look, talk to them now and see who the vendors are and get us some quotes, some options together? Uh, what's the best way to tackle it?
All right, I definitely expect to come to the meeting too.
I can call to you and why. One, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Uh, lease agreements for city properties, select woman Isaac.
Okay. Several years ago or several months ago, we had a conversation at the table. We talked about different lease agreements, like a hundred year lease agreement, ten year lease agreement, five year lease agreement. And we asked our lawyer, you know, to do something privately, but not, okay, the private lawyer, not this lawyer, but I'm saying we still up in the air about the lease agreement, you know, we never bring anything back. So I'm asking us to ask this lawyer, would she look into it, you know, and make arrangements so we can get our new lease signed and everything in there, get, uh, what we want in our, our lease about. One of my concerns was like, we have, we lease a building, like the Edgewood Park, and here they sub leasing to other people. And I was saying that nobody wants that in there, or they can sublease a building, we'll be leasing it to them. They can sublease the building for two hundred and fifty dollars, you understand? And that's, that could be money that Ms. Joyce could be taking in. And, and I'm still, I'm, I'm still sticking to that, Ms. Joyce. That could be money for the city, uh, that you can use, I'm just being honest, I'm a strong believer in it. And the hundred year lease, I'm just saying, sometimes that's a little too long. Because I'll be dead, you will be dead, if somebody else will be dead, you understand what I'm saying? Now, I'm just being honest, it, it should be. Mr. Mullen said we'll all be dead, so, but that's all about. So they laughed at it.
Select McCarty. Um, can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting or maybe she'll do it on her own free will for free? To, um, give us an update on all those leases, uh, that we were talking about and see which ones got renewed, which ones didn't, which ones haven't gotten renewed yet, we can talk about it next week.
I told, uh, Ms., uh, select woman Isaac, at the start of the meeting, she asked me to look in the CA office because that was something that between working between the CA and the private attorney, so it should be some files, records in there, I will look in there. If so, I'll pass that on to the present city attorney and have her look at it. If that's understandable.
So, let me, if I'm clear here.
Right.
So, um, my job to advise this board, so I'm more than happy to give you the information available to me. As I, uh, typically explained to select woman Isaac prior to the start of the meeting, I do not have access to any documents for the city without making a question from the record home, which is the city clerk's office. Seeing this as the work session agenda, I reached out to Ms. Casey and said, hey, if there is a shared holder or anything that has contracts and leases, can you please make me ask, allow me access to that holder so I can sort of look at where we are on leases? Um, there is not a shared holder. Their response back was, what specific lease are you looking for? And if I'm missing what you said, Ms. James, I'm pretty correct. Um, and so as far as I know, we're looking at all the leases to see where we are. Absent a specified list of leases, I don't know what leases the city has. There is absolutely no way for me to know that. If there is a current existing, uh, lease research that was done by Marcus that was not handed off to me as part of his handoff, uh, I have sent him a communication, I told you I'm gonna text him right then. I sent him a communication shortly before this meeting started, he has not responded. Um, I don't know that I will receive a response. If a, this exists of current leases or if a such thing does not exist or cannot be found, then respectfully, it is the city clerk's responsibility as the holder of the records to develop a list of leases. I'm more than happy to then come down, review every lease, I wouldn't ask them to pop your scan all over to me. I'm more than happy to come down anytime early on Tuesday and look through and see, you know, and help the city to develop a database so that we, all we gotta do is, if you ask for a lease on ABC, we can just put in ABC, the query comes up in any lease that we have with ABC. Uh, I don't have a list of how many buildings the city owns. If I had a list of how many buildings the city owns, that may give us a start. Maybe say, okay, we own fifty-four buildings. How many of those is leased out? And then by address of the building, we could then go and redo that research. But me, myself, as the city attorney, I don't have the, I don't have the capacity to give you an answer to your questions because I am not capable of directing the city clerk's office.
And again, and again, uh, I do know for a fact that the former CA, former, uh, attorney was working on the lease. That's why I'm thinking there's something in the CA office filed, something that we can pass on, but is, I need to do that maybe tomorrow, uh, look for it because, again, we just talked about this, this afternoon, late afternoon. Uh, select woman, Isaac.
I was trying to go to, to, uh, you have to put one little thing on there, on the, on the agenda. It's, I can do that thing back there.
It's going, that's going.
Okay, cause it's here, just make sure, okay.
Select woman, kids, did you have your hand up?
No.
Uh, select woman, Thompson.
Uh, I was just. Yes, yes. Um, so I, I guess back to my original request. Um, mayor, understand that you're gonna look in the CA's office for any information. And we also reach out to Marcus to kind of give an update on this. I appreciate selecting to bring that to the conference room. Um, and you may encourage Marcus to.
I, I, so this, you know, I have reset.
And I'll give them a call. Ms. Teague.
Um, this attorney, you are more than welcome to come, uh, facilitate the search. We have six file cabinets that say leases. And if you are more than welcome to tackle it, I'm more than welcome to let you walk on in. But at that point, I really, that's where I'm at at this point. I've had, uh, my staff organize it, we got it together, but we have no idea where we need to live. There are six file cabinets. That's why I just want to let you know that it's, it's anytime you want, you're more than welcome.
And hopefully I will be able to put my hands on documentation.
Teague. Select woman, Thompson.
Okay, okay. We will take care of that, let you know what we find out tomorrow.
Uh, select woman, Cady, you have three items.
Yeah, for me to go?
You're, you're up.
Uh, Dave. If Doug wants to come up, Doug called me today, uh, and, and kind of gave me the lowdown. Maybe best way is for me to say it and Doug to say where I was right or wrong. So, uh, two weeks ago, brought an issue to the board about a vendor, um, bidding on a dump truck that, that was put out to bid via reverse auction with the city that we voted on and approved. Um, that, that vendor, so Doug called me and told me that he got one bid. It was for a, a CDL truck. The spec was a non-CDL truck. So they rejected the bid and the bid opens back up today or tomorrow, okay, for reverse auction. Uh, so I called the vendor back and said, hey, I never got your bid. And they said that, um, the program, the site that they were doing reverse auction on, um, it was really more their fault, they didn't register as a user, I guess, in time or properly to be able to bid on it because it was open the first time. Um, and so they are properly registered and ready to bid on it in the future via reverse auction. Uh, so, uh, I have the report, nothing was wrong. Uh, and that the delay of getting the truck was based on not having a good bid last time. Uh, my only issue with this is the, you know, vendor I was speaking to is a professional truck supply company. And if they had difficulties registering to bid on something with the city home, it sounds like, it's probably not all that complicated and they probably often made an honest mistake. But I, I, I hate to hear there's barriers to do this, business with the city. Now, granted, saying that, I think reverse auction bidding is the best thing for this, the city. Is it blind or is it open? We asked that, is it, is it reverse auction blind or open?
Uh, one of the works is, and you'll have to talk with the center of the church, I just believe that, but they will. Uh, we will put it out, they will put their request to be able to bid on it, and she will say yes, bid on. So.
And that was done today, we had four vendors to bid.
Is it blind?
It's blind, it's blind up until tomorrow. When the bidding closes and then we'll watch it from there. We'll give them about what happened out to place there.
To fight each other for the load.
Exactly.
Um, but, but that's all, I just wanted, I, I brought something before the table and I wanted to go with clues and bring you a report back on what I should have.
This is how I think we have a disagreement, when you throw out stuff like, they are professional. I think all the companies are professional. I'm just saying, but you can't favor one over the other, all of them have the right to bid. I'm just saying, but it's the words you're using, and that's how we have a disagreement. So I'm saying all are professional, we need to have respect for all of, not just one that you're bringing. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, so now we are slandering and I never even met this person before or this company before, okay? Never once, okay? Two, um, maybe select woman Thompson can help me with this. Select woman Thompson, do you feel like sometimes it's difficult for contractors to do business with the city? And we don't, you know, it always goes out to, no, the local people get, get the ability to do it? Okay, so, so I think it is very fair to bring up accessibility to do business with minority companies with the business of, with McComb, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave you at that, thank you.
And I still believe you at what I said to you about how disrespectful you are when you still saying that companies are not professional.
Okay, um, thank you, just Doug, thank you, Ms. Emily. Uh, presentation of one point two million park renovation plan. Um, so, I, I think, I think this board knows that we, we do, I think we do a good job of listening to our citizens and one thing that I feel like we can do a little bit more of is support the kids. Um, I feel like we've nailed public support, I mean, public, uh, safety. I think we've nailed infrastructure. Um, you know, I would say that we've made the biggest investment in the last sixteen years in both public safety and, and, um, and infrastructure. Um, I did some numbers and I, I got with, um, our, our director of public, uh, director of recreation and, and got this, so this, this anticipated quotes is to replace all playground equipment at all playgrounds except for railroad, which has the newest one faded fine. Um, so that comes out to the three hundred and seventy thousand approximately. It includes finally giving the Titans and Ravens, the East McComb Lit Field to be able to play on summer nights, uh, the safety hazard be playing out there during the day. It gives them the bathrooms and concession stand, uh, that they badly need at East McComb Ball Field. And then it, it, it includes a A twenty grant for a, um, bike walking trail through Douglas Park that we would be responsible for twenty percent of, and it's eighty percent grant. If we do not get the grant, that money can go right back into better playgrounds. And then lastly, it does the dog park, uh, thirty thousand dollars for equipment at the dog park. Um, that's recommended. So this comes to, um, right at a million dollars. We do get hotel motel revenue e- every year. It's probably been one of our most consistent revenue sources. Um, speaking with the department head, I believe the best way to execute this and get it done before the six month debt period that we have at the end of our term is to either loan or bond, probably loan. If ten years with a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars paid out of the hotel motel fund, which we get about three hundred and thirty thousand, to do all the basketball courts in towns, we did a loan from hotel motel. Okay, I'm open to other financing sources, um, but, but this is a generational project for the city to update every single playground, get the East McComb multipurpose field lit and bathrooms over there. Um, I think that this is something that would be incredibly positive for the city. I have called two banks to see if it was even possible and they feel like it is. Uh, so Matt, why does it say one point two when it only comes to about one, one? Well, because the payback would be closer to one point two over the life of the, of the law.
I guess I'll start, no?
Yeah.
Um, at the start of your turn, which the hotel motel tax had been renewed, Ms. Joyce came to this board asking this board to do almost the same thing. And this board voted it out. And every time Ms. Joyce have done, and she's done, she's come before the board, we have as a board borrowed money at the start of the hotel motel tax whereby the hotel motel tax would pay for the loan. This hotel motel tax ends in July of twenty seventh. It will not be enough to pay for that loan. There is no guarantee that the state legislature will renew this, this hotel. We hope, but there is no guarantee that they would renew this. So therefore, if they don't renew it, the city will be stuck with paying a loan without revenue for it. I would tell this board, we should have done this when Ms. Joyce came to us two and a half years ago, three years ago. That way, that three hundred thousand would have been paying for that loan. Three years, you're talking about maybe you've got a million, not, you write it nine hundred and something. Four years, yes, you would have had more than enough to pay a loan. But now you got a year and a half and you gonna bring in three hundred thousand? No, don't make, I can't, you know, math don't add up and all that with me for this. So I can't support this. I can support it if the hotel motel taxes renew, borrow that money like we, like they've done, several boards have done before and let that hotel motel, but right now, I would say that it, it won't generate enough money to pay a loan before you go out of office. Because a new board will come in in July of twenty sixth. And you don't want to put a debt on the next board. That's just mayors, you know, and my two cents don't go far. Uh, select woman, Cady.
The, the, the first part of the response, you know, it sounds a lot of pride overspoke, you know? You know, oh, we didn't do it when they came last time. Well, we weren't ready. You know, we weren't ready at that time. Okay, my question to this board, are we ready now? And, you know, we can play in Fantasyland, okay, but we don't know what the state legislator is gonna do. They could go take away all of our sales tax tomorrow. They did it this year. They did, they did something funny with it. They could go take the, the Geo bond, urban rule bond we just wrote out of modernization fund, they can go take that next year and reformulate that somehow. We can play in Fantasyland all we want, okay? But the reality is, we have a funding source right now that's been renewed for the last, what, twelve cycles, twelve years? Hey, why would it not get renewed? And honestly, if you want to put it in front of our state legislators of, hey, the city just did a million dollar park renovation across the city to take care of our kids and you're gonna make them not be able to pay that back? This almost tells the state legislator, hey, why would they not do that? Okay? But this, this is real. This is consistent. Okay? But if we want to rain on new playground equipment at ninety-nine percent of the parks, everything on railroad, rain on the parade. But, okay, this is the same thing we did with urban renewal. Okay, the same thing you would do with any bond. The, the, the state can come down and say, oh, you can't do any more bond issues anymore. They can do whatever they want.
I'm so glad he said that because there's no guarantee that it would be renewed. And therefore, if you borrow a million dollars and it's not renewed, just remember, he said the state can do anything. So state aside, they don't want to renew it against what you're stuck with. And understand, Lockley understands a whole lot. More than what's being said around the tape. You know, we want to earn brownie parts because we are going into an election year. And therefore, we want to throw out projects and we want to throw out things that's gonna make us look good in election. Okay?
Yeah, you mean, you mean to that virtually? It's not, you, you get something else. You know, just with that thing.
Well, that was true.
No, what?
Um, uh, i- i- if we're saying that like I'm running for the at large seat or I'm running for mayor, that is not true. Hey, there's only one seat I'm running for. It's the one I currently sit in. Okay, so the fact of I'm trying to do something around the whole, whole city to like drum up votes is the biggest pile of shit I've ever seen in the face of, face here, okay? Let's do the right thing, okay? We've done a great job the last year keeping politics out of this room.
He did disrespect.
We've done a great job keeping politics out of this room, okay? This actually comes from another place, the place of what we discussed in executive session last week. You know exactly where this comes from, okay? It's punishment from executive session last week, okay? So we need to do the smart thing here, okay? And look at this project for what it is. What the mayor stands is on funding, that's a decent tenant. That is a very decent state. I have no issue with, with the funding argument. Okay, but for political gain, I, I, I disagree with, okay? I completely and utterly disagree with. It will be on the agenda next week, uh, to, to be voted up or down. Of, of course, it won't be the formal vote. It'll just be to pursue some type of loan agreement so we can see all the details of what it consists of.
I think we need to apologize to the citizen for someone using inappropriate language. I will apologize for this board, uh, for our colleague using inappropriate language.
Um, ladies on Edgewood Park, uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, Invictus was up here last week, uh, a select woman brought up lease agreements for city properties. I think it ties in well. Um, you know, I, he, he spoke of the error that he made of turning on the electricity. He wasn't really exposed to, but he was trying to test the lights and get lights for his practices. You know, I think the best way to hash out a lot of the legal stuff is to formalize the lease with that organization. My only pushback here is, you know, my understanding is this or- organization is using this practice, this practice area for less than three hours a week. Um, this area needs to be open to the public, uh, anytime that they're not using the area. Um, so I would ask that there be some type of clause in this that allows it to be open to the public and not a sole lease where they have unilateral control. Um, I don't have the, the legal background to know how to include that in the lease. Uh, but the goal of, I believe the goal of this board, the Edgewood Project, is to create a public place. Um, and, and I think we can still do that through a lease that allows him to turn on the lights.
That means that we need to obviously train the staff working on a lease for Edgewood and I will get prepared on everything. Selectmen Thompson.
Why couldn't we have like?
Well, 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 first of all, we're, it, it's something that we've got to finally, uh, address as board in Edgewood. Uh, once we come to consensus on Edgewood, then we can address the lights. Yep. Uh, the whole issue of whether or not we should go in there and clean everything out. All that, those light poles, all that are in, in.
Oh, that's the same here.
That's the same.
Clean it out.
You have a permit to the, this whole lease discussion. Um, prior research, you'll define also with public body. And you made a comment, selectwoman, about one hundred year lease, a dollar or something like that. I would tell you what I do know the law says is that if we're leasing out public spaces, they must be leased out for fair market value. And if you all have a lease that's four dollars, I would venture to say that's probably not fair market value. Furthermore, any board, no, 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 no board can buy this accessory. So if there's a hundred year lease out there, all you guys got to do is.
So we have to work on, on that. Okay? Uh, moving right along, you have in your packet, a invoice from Paul Luckett. You have that invoice from Paul Luckett where, uh, he was able to, uh, go in, assist Mr. Barnes and save us some money. If you have any questions about it, I can answer. Mr. Luckett will come and you can ask any questions about him. Okay? Put it on the agenda. Do you want Paul Luckett to come?
Yes, I think he did a great job explaining in the back of the paperwork. I mean, it was rare, uh, it's four days in jail compared to what would have been ninety days in jail. We can do the math. You save us a bunch of money.
Bunch of money. But I just say, you know, cause I can't explain it like.
He probably makes a statement.
Also, you have your packet, a, uh, invoice from Booker Camper. Uh, did have opportunity to speak with him. He did provide our city clerk with update that she provided to the state auditor. You haven't given it to the.
I haven't received anything. If you received it first, I haven't gotten it. If you did, I have yet to look and sit down at my desk to look at it. So I don't think I have not received it.
Okay. Well, he is positive. We like that. Uh.
Got a question?
Yeah.
So he's billed us thirty thousand dollars. Is that for the next audit?
Yes, he's working on point two.
Okay, here's my concern here. Two weeks ago, Horn stood right there and said the financials account, none of the accounts were reconciled for this year that he's working on. And they didn't have any of the accounts to even start reconciling. So I'm wondering what he has done for thirty thou- twenty-nine thousand dollars on an audit.
You want him here?
Yeah.
I get you.
You received it now. You received it. You know, I received it and you're saying.
Yes. I get him here and you can ask him that question.
Uh, I don't know that he needs to come all the way from Memphis to come to answer this question. Um.
He can be also.
I, I just, I just want to know where we're heading.
That's not a question I can answer. Uh.
Okay, let me, let me say it a different way. Maybe we need to rein him in on what he's doing. Put Horn in charge of him somehow or something to find out what he is spending money on, because I don't want to get another hundred thousand dollar bill and an audit of no opinion. Cause that's where we're heading, because he has no information to do an active audit at this point. So I don't know what he's working on. I would tell him to take this bill and just keep it. I, I, I don't know what is.
I get him now. Okay.
Or he can watch this video and understand what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know. He needs to come down here and hear again.
Best thing to have people in place, whether it's Zoom or in person. Uh, selectmen, hi.
Um, I think this question's gonna end up being for the city clerk. Uh, so I think the whole board knows that our last audit had, was done with no opinion. And no opinion could be given based on the lack of sound financials. It was a best guess. Um, you know, clerk, do you have any information from the state auditor's office if a audit of no opinion is acceptable or counts?
I have verbiage as a reply, but I don't, cannot convey that definitively because the words that she, uh, provided me means that we still need to do more. It sounds like with her information, we're okay with that. It's up to you guys if you want to pay for them to give us a better one. Because now we have the financials completed problem. So it sounds like with what she gave me with the statement was, it's up to us. But I'm not me, but you guys to pay for another one to say it's, it's different because they completed it.
Yeah, so my understanding was that the state auditor's office says, audit of no opinion, essentially doesn't count. Okay, and so, you know, is there really anything that Booker can do until Horn has caught up to him? I mean, he stood up here two weeks ago and said he found one point eight billion dollars. In my mind, that almost throws out the last audit. You know, like, how can we as a board sit here and accept an audit that's one point eight billion dollars off? Um, thankfully, it does not include the hotel motel fund, its other funds, but I'm just gonna throw that out there. I'll get back.
Real quick.
One, don't, don't.
The audit limit, the books, they just reconcile for, for Bruno's.
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah. The audit we got a no opinion, that year has not been reconciled. That's what he's working on right now. So when he gets through with that, then he can fix that opinion of no.
Yes.
Yeah, so he's working on the next, he sent us a bill for twenty-nine thousand for the next year near, which is two years behind on getting Booker reconciled. So I, I, anyway, something, something done that up here.
And like I said, we get them here, whether it's Zoom or in person. And those questions can be asked. That way. That way I won't be trying to feel any more. Okay? Uh, you have a invoice there, um, twenty seventeen tax incentive. We need to pay that. It is two ten one, so we can pay this. Put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, limit on the operation bond. Uh, this is a D O bond, correct?
No, this is tax two. We are R B, R B two.
How much was it?
Um, two million, something.
I know, but how much is the bill?
The bill is thirty-seven. Total is thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand?
Thirty-seven four seven zero one five.
Okay, so wha- what is this tip for and why did it make close?
Pressing.
Okay, it, it's still open. I thought we didn't really spend much of this.
Yeah.
Bring that angle your crossing project.
Correct. We did, they did the water sewer. We had to reimburse them.
So what, where does this get paid out of?
Uh, our obligation when we set our millage rate for debt service.
So, uh, essentially, yeah, so this gets back to my refund. The, this does not come out of the general fund. This is a millage rate that is set on top of whatever we've set, just like the library is, a few other things. So this money comes into the city via the tax collector, goes into its own little account in the corner and gets paid directly back out, okay? Just like a Geo bond would be, not a government bond.
All our debt services go into a debt service bank account. When it's due to be paid, we pay all those debt services out of that bank account. Uh, Cox Architect invoice. You see that it's not really, Cox is actually, uh, twenty L. And you see the amount is thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, Mr. Cox said he's looked over it and all seems to be good. He's asked us to go ahead and pay that.
What was the, what was the close date?
Twelve.
Have we received any five hundred dollar payment? What is, sorry, Mayor?
We're gonna have to begin with our city attorney and have her to, uh, look at our contract and talk, talk to their attorney. So we'll talk about it next week. Okay? Infomart, you would have two bills there from Infomart. Yes.
We've been at the office getting ice cream now.
Hello? Anything here that?
Office candy, pretty much all of the, uh, wonderful receipts. We have the receipts you can't read, uh, to know what's on them. Like if you're getting the Halloween.
Here's candy about each card.
When they got each card.
You don't know how it looks for each card. Anything that you think that we should pull out and talk to them about? That's why you get, that's why you get, um, topics of their billing and all that. Yes, sir. He had it up first. Yes, sir. His green briar was for fourteen thousand. And, uh, but it's in the package, you know? Why do they bill? Because it's a one with this right up. So you want me to get them here too? I'll be more than glad. I'll be more than glad. In, in.
Well, it, it's important to whether or not they need their assistance on.
Well, it, it's important to whether or not they need their assistance on these projects. Uh, they may not have had the equipment or whatever. And Brown had the equipment and the guy who brought it to the work, and they paid him. I'm, I'm, you know, so I, what I would do is have them come. Okay? You may.
Uh, who, who looks at these before it comes to us? You know, we, we really talked around, let me back up. We have a really great court clerk who has caught a few things and brought it to us and, um, who screens all the bills that come to her before they come to us. You know, it's a real great steward of public funds and looks over bills before they're turned in. Um, who screens these bills? Whose category should it go to, uh, to make sure that these types of things are approved before they come to us? From the C A? And we all have. How's C A?
Their response to C A is responsible for reviewing documents before they send it to the board.
So, so this comes directly from, um, Infomart. And who, who'd they send this to? Who received September tenth by the signature? But what is this?
It comes in, I print it up and give it to its head.
So that's how it pays you. I just think we should run through our wastewater department. Uh, it's kind of what I'm getting at. You know, we have the wastewater department.
Well, we have it. Board would like that to happen.
That's a day-to-day operation. But I do wanna publicly praise Selectwoman Taylor Martin Bailey. That's a good catch. You got it, Hope? You?
Uh, I'll do that one. I would have them to come. Okay, you have the budget from Southwest Mississippi Medical Center. Just receiving it. Uh, you have Mississippi Rural Placement Summit. Uh, if anybody wants to go there, we'll have to put this on the agenda.
When do we go to last?
We've, we've been here before. Disaster leadership. This would have to go on the agenda, you have to approve.
Okay, can I make a comment on that?
You may.
Uh, so this was a conference, uh, that started back after COVID. Their first location was in McComb. Uh, they had last year here at the Palace St. Andrew's, Boston Pizza. Uh, it was a great success. Uh, the fact that like a lot of these conferences we go to, we get seats of areas, community education programs, and we have to submit this guy. Uh, I would not be going to this conference, but I would just like to praise this conference for stepping out, choosing McComb, uh, and, and being a part of our revival.
Uh, do you want to say that we have received, we have received? We have received the request from, that, uh, the board made from the, uh, utility division as relates to meters, thirteen original meters, as well as those meters that was replaced. Uh, I'm passing out that information. Please take it home, look at it, don't share it because you will notice that on the second document, there are names and addresses.
You can block out the names, just do that.
I just copied it. Okay. Go ahead.
Um, so on this first page, uh, the numbers listed, I'm trying to be as vague as possible while asking questions. The numbers listed, are those the bills for like September or, or, is that the July, August, July bills, something like that?
I would swing that that is the, uh, billing that went out, so that would be the office bill.
Uh, can we get a confirmation on that? And then we also get maybe like a slash or parentheses next to it of what the billing was before the change? Actually, it'd be very value-added for us to see, uh, how much we were being split.
Also, you notice at the bottom of the front page, it says all meters that were changed in July should have accurate billed by nine one. Uh, all meters that were changed in office should have accurate billed by ten one. She's letting you all know and all that was changed, if any was changed in September, they would have an accurate yield by then, because we bill them on that. But take it again, look through it, have any questions? Uh, you asked for it, I went to her and I turned to generate this because you all asked for that information. I always say there's, you know, we ask for information, you get what they asked for, and if that's not what they want, just let me know and I'll go back and ask the city division. Selectwoman Kansas.
Can you ask if there's any large meters that are still not replaced?
I would be more than glad.
Um. Page.
On a broken. Hey? All right.
No, I, I'm honestly.
Next, uh. You, you may?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know the right way of asking.
That's why I say take it, look at, connect, ask all the questions.
Thank you back.
Okay, again, take it, review it, have any questions? I can get Ms. Jamaica up here and she can answer any questions. Not me, I just asked for the information and provide you the information. Um, this, uh, Selectwoman Isaac, uh, wanted to add to the agenda, Mr. Baron Nathaniel, he's here. Okay, uh, if you remember, he came to us, talking to us about, um, speed bumps around the school. Okay? Go ahead, Mr. Nathan.
Good evening, how you doing?
Doing good.
Yeah, I think it'd been over a little bit, two months ago, we talked about the speed bump in the school area. And Mayor, I think that I had spoke with you, uh, two weeks after the meeting, and you said it was on order or something?
They were ordering.
Yes.
Okay, it's supposed to be in order, but, uh, something, something gonna have to be done. I mean, something gonna have to be done. I don't know whether they're gonna choose for something to happen before we get done. These are our babies, these are the school. It is ridiculous, right there between Gay Street, they come across, they got a, a thing there, and people still go that way when they're supposed to be coming this way. I mean, it, it just, it, it just doesn't make sense. You know, I know it's a process, and I'm, and I understand that things take time to happen, but it's been going on a little over two months. And I don't know what is to do.
Um, I'll take some responsibility for this, I'll take almost a lot of it because, because, um, when you came forward, I felt very comfortable with the, the majority of the board that there was a plan I could go draw up. Well, I've since gotten with the planner and drawn up a plan for, for the situation. The issue was, we were waiting for some of our projects to get completed and see how much money we had left over. Uh, and to do a bigger plan. Now, I will say, a lot of the plan is adding signage and speed bumps. And if, if the citizens, if people of our community are not respecting the current signage, sure ain't gonna respect new signage, a plan on putting up. So that is a, you know, that's a public safety thing, which I think, I, I can't stress that a police unit can do anything, but I think here's allowed and clear, and I think there'll probably be some extra controls in that area in the next coming days. Now, that still doesn't solve your problem, but what, what I was charged with was looking at all the parks, all the schools, and getting a solution, something to help, we actually talked about this when we came to building. Along, along all of them, but I was waiting for our money to shake out to see how much we had left. We should have money left because it doesn't cost much. Now, if you'd like to charge the city to do speed bumps immediately, that's something we can do, that's not a deal. Uh, and we can probably do it quickly, but I don't think that sensor can fix all the problems I do fix in hell. Uh, and so I, I just wanna let you know that I heard you, did something about it, it's not complete yet, uh, and why it's not complete yet. Okay? Um, but I do understand your frustration of you having time in this thinking. I'll, I'll leave it there.
So, uh.
What? It's just Gay Street. Really, really come on.
Where, where it says do not enter, they come in anyway.
I'm, I'm looking at the map, I'm just trying to understand where you think the issue is.
The issue is, uh.
Like if, like, um, where Gay Street meets Virginia?
Are going to, I mean, they was racing on my street, uh, this past weekend. You had challenges, you had charges, they were racing on Virginia. This weekend, you could hear them all the way through McComb from Delaware, roughing up Indian, going up down the interstate. You can hear them. You can, you can hear them, and they use that as a scapegoat, as I stated once before, to cut across. Somebody's gonna get them. Our babies, they need to be safe because my wife said that she had Kennedy eaters. Over there because she said that a guy went around to stop saying, just so happened one of the babies didn't committed to go all the way around, she was on duty. She says it's, 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 it's bad. It's really bad. So we're gonna put a price on our kids, waiting to see what the budget gonna have left when this really needs to be done. Uh, uh, something needs to be, a plan needs to be, you know, I understand that the police office can be everywhere where they need to be, I take that in consideration, I really do. But something is going, go ahead.
Supplies and demand, uh, comes into issue here, just because you order them does not mean that they're gonna be in in time to make. And we can't make a supplier deliver anything to us, all we can do is make our order. And as soon as they come in, we'll be more than glad to lay them down, but we got to wait until they hit him. And that's not because we don't care, it's because we don't have no other option. Uh, as far as the speed bump. Now, police department, they can be there sometime, but they're not gonna be there all the time, you know? Uh, maybe they'll be there doing school hours, you know, when they come to school, when they get out of school. But that might be as most they can spend there. But, you know, our hands sometime are tied to making supplies and, and getting supplies.
I just have a question, when they was racing, anybody call the police?
I started to, uh, cheer, but I didn't, and, and that was my, 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 my ball to draw. I did, I did, I started to, cause man, neither someone just got through doing the lawn. I mean, but clearly, on Delaware, you could see it here, so.
When they got here, it's like we gotta be more active citizen, we started, and I'm not judging, but that's what a lot of people, they don't, they won't call the police, and they'll blame the police for not showing up. Or they'll blame us for not knowing, for nobody never let anyone know they can fix a problem, that it's a problem, until it's a problem. So, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking a question to everybody.
No, I did, I did.
I can hear a lot of stuff too.
I did, I did, so, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and I did. And I should have, but, uh, you know, just like Mayor was saying, you know, they can be there after school, doing school or whatever, but they can't be there every day. As long as you know someone there, you're gonna do what, you're gonna do right. You're gonna do right. So if we had to order this speed bump, why we can't have them made like they got over there in White Acres? So, you know, we can have them made, uh, have them made. Because eventually what you put down, gonna do what, it gonna comes up. But you can have them made like they got over there in White Acres, as I stated, the, 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 the school and the church over there on White Acres, where it is, uh, a, a handful of kids go there, right down through there, I mean, you got speed bump there. So the, 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 the question is, I understand it is a process there, I get it, I get that for me. There's a process and everything that has to be done. But there are also another alternative that can be done. So we can have those speed bumps concrete, uh, well, how would they do it in the road instead of waiting?
Gee, you want to say?
How you doing, Saturday, do you? Yes, sir, there is a process, uh, we put speed bumps out, that's all of the law, uh, for the sake. We're gonna have to look at changing the speed limit before we say it's split. So, but, but what you, you would love, cause I just acquired a house in Virginia. So, that's personal. So I'll make sure that area is taken care of, but it's sort of a process. We're gonna work with schools, we've been working closely with the schools, they're working with the, uh, with the resource officer, we're gonna show them how to do traffic and work closely with them. We're gonna get these done, there is a process, speed limit, how to be trying, uh, citizens have to, inner community has to be, uh, made aware, so notices have to go out saying that speed limits are changed. So there is a, a big process that the board have to go on, but like I say, you're over in Virginia here. I'm taking that person tonight, cause I didn't know about racing. So I want the public to know that the T live over there somewhere, so be able to look at. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
My mouth.
Well, the speed limit in all of the schools, um, it did change per hour, I believe, not more than that.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. And we have ordered this speed bump because like they, in all of the school areas in my district, and I think in Selectwoman Bailey, they're speeding in all of those schools, but we need to have the speed bump. We're aware of that. Uh, but I think until we can get the speed bumps, I do think that police need to maybe alternate a day or so here, just so that people can see that you're present, you're not eating it here for day, but what? You're out there one day and you give out a couple of tickets, I think that, uh, you'll see, you'll see a huge difference.
Yes, sir, they get the message.
Uh, so two things, one, I think I owe you a little bit of response of why it took a minute. You know, the initial thought, especially in Virginia, is I can put speed bumps out, I can, I can request speed bumps and put out the road, but my biggest concern was they would just go around the, on the school property, onto their parking area and around it. So I'm having to work with the school district as well to line up those bumps and make sure they're okay with it as well. Uh, so that we're not just pushing them going around into that parking area to go around it, because that is not our problem. Two is, have we given the authority to the McComb School District Officers to tickets or hash out any of that near local stuff? I don't know if they even want it, but I do think that there's probably an interest on their behalf to ticket on the roads alongside within their jurisdiction to, to help protect, um, their students as well, and it honors through our court system. Uh, I don't know if there's gonna be a, a money grab that's statute and honor.
They could issue that we have checked out.
Uh, they are state certified law enforcement officers, so they should be, I don't know about the city auditor, but they are state.
They may not have a city ticket book.
They can acquire ticket book, they can put in for ticket book with the state and the city.
I mean, I'm a school resource officer, I write a ticket for a work that I go to. You get what I'm saying? All that's gotta be hashed out.
Just if they, like if they arrest a teacher, they'll still have to bring it to a house.
An adult, an adult on campus.
That's an adult on campus, you know, you know. You got, you got the U four D, you come over to the justice court, I mean, the, the justice court. But, uh, they do have that, that same jurisdiction to be there. So, uh, we work closely, we've been working closely, I think we've been in a great relationship with the school resource officer. Uh, we're doing really good, I'm, I'm proud of that.
Yeah, some, uh, some point would be, which is.
I can't see what comes out.
Yeah.
Select, Selectwoman, the two have. Okay, thank you. We will see what we can do about it.
I, I will have that plan out here as soon as we know. I, I will have that plan out here as soon as you know.
I know, and Chief said he's.
Kind of something to you and she'll feed that.
Okay. I have a note here, uh, we have eight tickets for the concert on seven, I have digital. Uh, the Iron Horse Festival concert. Uh, they need to know who, but they can go ahead and put it in the system. Okay, uh, is that the meal? Okay, um, Baylor, anyone else going? I need to get this information. You going, select? It's digital. Now, when you come to, to the, uh, door, there. That's why she wants. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Select woman? Okay, select woman McKenzie?
Yeah.
Select woman Connie? Select woman Connie? Yeah, that's a tone.
Dave Parker?
No. Oh, it starts at six. Okay, um, got that out the way, I'm trying to get everything. Monley reviews, is there anything else? Have I missed anything? Monley reviews.
Sir. Good night, how are y'all? During the month of August, the McComb Fire Department responded to seventy-six calls for service. This total includes two structure fires, five brush fires, two vehicle fires, one trash fire, twenty-seven rescue and medical officers. Four gas leaks, eight general service calls and twenty-five false alarms. We currently have six vacancies and that's it.
Feel good star, area.
All right.
I had a truck fixed, I was looking for a new one.
Feel good store, that was months ago. We started our one thousand one class today and stumbling block is the vacancies in our pay.
We need to say it right here. Uh, twenty-five false alarms, uh, it's something that, I think the board has already, uh, brought some concern about in the past. Uh, is there any, could you go back, it looks like the past twelve months? And see if that number is up and down or if it's consistently decreasing or not? See if, if it's increasing, it'd be something that it's pretty much stagnant, you know, just linear. I think it could be interesting if something that, I think it's in back row. And Henry could get it back to the front row, I think that would be a front at top.
We're working with Henry and Mr. James, we got a list started.
Do you have the teeth?
They're gonna go and force it? They do.
Yeah.
Thank you, you did a good job, like. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening again, wish them to apologize, some of us are passionate and some of us purchasing some of the product. But, uh, I'm gonna go ahead. Come on. Police August for, uh, ticket issues, one fifty. Ticket paid thirty-six, income from the ticket in this means are twenty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents. That was a hundred and five arrests made. We had seven felony cases bound over Grand Jury. We have a total of forty-two felony, uh, cases. Uh, forty-one was nonviolent felonies. One, uh, was a murder that a body was found in Lawrence County. Uh, and it, uh, was found that it happened in McComb. And two arrests have been made in that, in that, uh, murder. Uh, so, uh, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't know about it, but the body was supposed to be taken to Lawrence County somewhere. Uh, we currently have, uh, twenty-two patrol officers, one full-time coordinator, four investigators. Uh, one, uh, warrant and special detail officers. We have four officers on the A and C shift and B and D shift, we have five officers. We still are doing the main street details on weekends, uh, I think that's a feel good story. We haven't had any videos lately. And, uh, and, uh.
Had, had no what?
Video, video. And, uh, yeah, that's it, feel good, feel good story. Uh, we do have a great time and momentum, I don't want to lose that, we have a lot of efforts. Uh, we're not stealing their noise, but we do have a lot of efforts. Uh, various, uh, we need money for raise promotion and pause.
Uh, how was our officer as of today?
Thank you, he, he been in surgery, he got surgery yesterday and, uh, dislocated and, uh, healed in the, uh. Part of a broken bone inside his hip. Uh, he's recovering well, he'll start, he'll start therapy. Looking at about six weeks, or six week downtown, if everything's going well. But thank you, thank for asking.
So, I, I don't, I don't know how to say this spell, um, it comes across one way, probably will. Um, his, his, well, I think it's something we need to mention now. Um, his payroll last month was, was ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um, and then ticket income was twenty-three thousand. So remember that payroll number of ninety-nine thousand is not Blue Court Court Services or anything of that.
Thank you.
Just for no, I think it was asked on the last meeting, I know we really go, but shot spotters, July, we, July we had. Yes, they, they work real well, July we had three hundred and seven, was, you got, that was for, for July. June was one oh four, for August is one oh one. So there are, that, that's working, I think it's, it's doing great, we are still responding. And the shots are constantly going down, I hope you can hear the tale, but that's, I don't know if we can tell.
Can you send that report to us?
Anyone else? Is there anyone else? Uh, Iron Horse, um, Festival will be, uh, starting Wednesday with the carnival. Carnival, uh, will be Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday and Saturday. Uh, live entertainment will start Friday night, continue Saturday with live entertainment. Vendors, food, craft vendors, as well as the carnival going on. Then Friday night will, will be topped off with the concert. All this is new to the Iron Horse Festival. We want people to come out, it's gonna be a friendly, family, safe event. No beer or alcohol will be sold.